Welcome to the meeting. It is May 11th. I'm Patty McCoy. I would like to welcome everybody here. Anybody who is watching or listening on the radio station, or perhaps watching at a later time, we're glad you are joining us. I would like my fellow board members to introduce themselves. We will start with Mr. Brooks.
Hello, everyone. My name's Doug Brooks. Thanks for coming out tonight.
Hi, everybody. I'm Patrick Kehoe. Thanks for joining us this evening.
Good evening. This is Anupam Shadudu. Thanks for being here.
Hello. Good evening. Lauren Christensen.
Good evening. Sean Wilson.
All right. Thank you so much. I also want to mention that we had come out of closed session, which is why we're a little tardy starting again. Ms. Merritt, would you like to introduce yourself and your staff, please?
Good evening. Monica Merritt, Superintendent. Welcome to our meeting this evening. I'd like to begin by introducing my assistant, Ms. Diane Robertson, and thank her for taking our minutes on our board meetings. I would like to ask the remaining members of the staff to introduce themselves to you, beginning with Mr. Brandon.
Good evening. Nick Brandon, Executive Director of Communications and Marketing. Welcome.
Hi. I'm WPO. I'm the Chief Finance and Operations Officer. Welcome.
Good evening. Kurt Tiskowitz, Executive Director of Student Services.
Liz Vartanian Gibbs, Human Resources. Good evening.
Beth Rale, Chief Academic Officer. Thanks for being here.
All right. And next up, we have the Pledge of Allegiance. If everybody would like to rise.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. We are at Letter A, Adoption of Agenda, Approval of Consent Agenda, which is Action Item 210568. I am looking for a motion.
Madam President, I move that we adopt the agenda and approve of the consent agenda, action item 210568.
Thank you. I'm looking for a second.
Second.
All right. It's been moved by Mr. Brooks and seconded by Mr. Kehoe that we adopt the agenda and approve the consent agenda. Would you like to take us through that, please?
Yes, President McCoy. This evening, our consent agenda consists of human resources transactions since the last time we were together. We have new hires, leaves, resignations, and retirements for your consideration, as well as the approval of minutes from our special meeting on April the 17th, 2021, our regular meeting on April 27th, 2021, and our special meeting on May 4th, 2021. Also this evening, we have first reading of the following policies. Policy 5460, Graduation Requirements; Policy 5540, Interrogation of Students; and Policy 8321, Criminal Justice Information Security. This is non-criminal justice agency.
All right. Thank you so much. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No? All right. It passed 6-0. Dr. Vartanian Gibbs.
Good evening. I would like to take a moment to introduce you to some new school nurses, and some of them are here with us this evening. Alyssa Akers-Nawiki. Alyssa is going to be a school nurse at Workman School and Liberty School. She comes to us with a bachelor's degree from Eastern Michigan University, a master's degree from Spring Arbor College, and over 18 years of experience. Rebecca Anderson. Rebecca is going to be a new school nurse at Discovery, Miller, and Hoben Schools. She comes to us with a bachelor's degree from Mount Carmel College of Nursing and over five years of experience from St. Mary's Hospital. Amy Karagay.
Thank you. Stand up.
Welcome, Amy. I'm so glad you're here. Amy is going to be our new school nurse at Canton High School. This high school right here, Amy. Welcome. We're so glad you're here. You come with a bachelor's degree from Eastern Michigan University and over 13 years of experience as a public school nurse. Welcome, Amy. Thank you for selecting Plymouth-Canton Community Schools. And I would like to thank everybody who's been part of hiring all of these fabulous nurses for our school community. Next, I would like to thank three special people in our district who have decided to retire. Kathy Atsett, school nurse. She's been with us for over 21 years. Scott Burgh, middle school principal at East. He's been with us for over 10 years. And Kathy Papich, Executive Secretary, Human Resources, who's been in the district for 18 years. So congratulations to Kathy, Scott, and Kathy for all of the work they have done for us in the district. I would like to thank them, and congratulations on your retirement. Thank you.
All right. Thank you so much. Next up, we are at Letter B, Celebrating Success, one of the best parts of our evening. And our presenter tonight is Members of Do.
Thank you. And it is an honor. Celebrating success this evening, we will honor the Plymouth-Canton Community Schools' amazing team of secretarial staff. This dedicated group was nominated by the core team on behalf of the entire district. Our administrative assistants and support staff are truly the front lines of the entire school community. The hard work and dedication they have shown throughout the pandemic has been commendable. When children get sick, fall on the playground, feel sad, or need a break, it is usually the school secretary that sees them first. The secretary is the go-to point for so many. The secretary decides whether to get support from a custodian, principal, or call a parent when assistance is needed. The school secretary is also the image of the school to the public, the kind voice, the smiling face, the producer of ice for scrap knees, the snacks for students in need, the pencils, papers, and other supplies that students need, and the list goes on. Our district secretaries have been relied on flawlessly to manage daily operations and to make sure things run smoothly in a timely and professional manner within a challenging and ever-changing work environment. Somehow, our miraculous multitasking administrative assistants managed to be available for all of these needs and still register new students, schedule meetings, type up reports, agendas, meetings, newsletters, et cetera, and keep everybody informed during such a busy school year. And they do all of this with the utmost composure without showing frustration. Our secretaries treasure their interactions with children and know the importance of giving them the best school experience possible. That's what keeps everyone who works in a school or for the district going from day to day and year to year. At this time, we would like to invite Kurt Tiskowitz, Executive Director of Student Services, to talk about the nomination for this outstanding secretarial staff in our district.
Thank you very much. It is my pleasure to speak on behalf of our secretarial group. They are the backbone of our buildings and our schools. The amount of work that they do that is unseen by many. They are the ones that are there for the staff. They are the ones that are there for the students. They welcome our parents. They are the face of our schools and certainly the right hand of the principal. As a former building principal, I always just say it's really the secretary that runs the building. They are the nuts and bolts of the school and hold everything together. And it's certainly my pleasure to work with them day in and day out, to be able to call them up when I need something. They're always willing to help, and I truly appreciate them. As all of our administrators would say, they could not function without their secretaries and their administrative assistants. So we're very fortunate and very honored to be able to recognize them today and appreciate the work that they do. Thank you.
Thank you.
On behalf of the Board of Education, I present the members of the secretarial staff with the Mary Beth Carroll Extra Miler Award. You can see the names on the screen behind us. Joyce Bowder, Secretary of Plymouth High School, would now like to say a few words about the recognition on behalf of the team.
On behalf of the Plymouth-Canton Secretaries, I'm honored to thank you for this award and for everything that it represents. I consider it a privilege to work alongside the PCCS Secretaries, who are dedicated to taking care of all those other extra tasks and surprises that come along to create an atmosphere where the teachers can focus on the teaching, and the students can feel comfortable, and they can focus on and be ready to learn. We all know that it takes a village, and I think it's safe to say that the secretaries strive to be the infrastructure of this village. We take pride in clearing the path for learning, embracing the needs of the staff, the parents, the community, and most importantly, the students. This year's been particularly challenging with new circumstances and responsibilities that none of us could have imagined just over a year ago. Along with the regular tasks that we perform, we had to work with subs that couldn't get along and get into Canvas, contact trace for COVID-positive students, answer questions from teachers and parents and students and communities of things that were changing over and over. But it was a brand-new learning experience for us, and we were constantly being supported by the teachers and the other staff members that we work with and that we are blessed to be with every day, and we appreciate that. We did all of this for one reason and one reason only. Well, actually, 17,000 reasons. That's our students. That's why we were there, and we very much appreciate the opportunity to serve them and serve the rest of you. Again, thank you so much for this award and recognition. It's greatly appreciated.
You all certainly do deserve a standing ovation from everybody in the community. Thank you, thank you, thank you for everything you've done, and what a year it has been. We appreciate everything that you all do. Congratulations to the secretarial staff for earning this esteemed recognition. Thank you for all that you do for our students, staff, and families to learn, prepare, and thrive every day with PCCS. Thank you.
Thank you so much. I currently work in a school, and we cannot survive on days our school secretary was not there. We could barely get in the building in the morning. So we are going to move on now to Board Committee Reports. And action up first is the President's Report. I don't have a lot to report. We did have a meeting last week where we talked about our themes for the upcoming year, which are included in the presentation that we will be seeing later. So we spent two constructive hours wordsmithing. It was challenging. We have, you know, seven people who are opinionated, so it takes a while. But we came with something everybody could live with, so we're very happy about it. And that will be the themes for our dynamic planning, which we are still doing. And that is about it. We do have members who are still going to various trainings, which is exciting, and that will kind of wind down in the summer a bit. So next up is Student Performance and Achievement Committee with Anupam.
Thank you. We had a great meeting, and of course, we always have a ton to talk about. We really focused a lot of our time with the Teaching and Learning Goals outlined in the Dynamic Plan around culturally relevant pedagogy and universal design for learning with regard to where we are with making sure that teachers are trained appropriately and effectively. And a lot of great programs and support is happening around those categories in addition to other PD that has been arranged. We also looked at new textbook purchases, and I believe, Ms. Merritt, did we bring any textbooks for us?
Next meeting.
Next meeting. Okay. Eventually, they will be coming to the full board for approval. And please reach out to me or Beth Rale if you want to look at those ahead of time. We also got a preview of a new social-emotional tool. And Beth, help me with the name of it.
It's known as Panorama.
Panorama. And it looks to be a really exciting tool to help increase social-emotional support for our students. As you know, that has been a huge need this year, so we are looking at every opportunity to expand that support. So we will continue to dig into that, and Beth will continue to give us more information around that. And our next meeting is June 2nd at 4:30 p.m. Thank you.
Next up is the Policy Committee. We have not met since our last board meeting. However, I do want to point out that on the agenda tonight was the first read for the graduation requirements, where if you have a junior, we're removing the requirement that they must attempt the MME in their junior year for graduation. So if anybody was worried about that, you can rest easy on it. And then our next meeting will be May 25th. It may be at 5:00 as opposed to 5:30 because there may be another meeting conflict, but we will get that information out as quickly as possible. And that meeting will be in this building. Not sure what room. It depends, but there will be a sign up, and everybody is welcome to attend. Next up, we have Finance and Operations with Patrick Kehoe.
Thank you. I want to thank Member Brooks for attending or driving the first half of the meeting that we met on May 6th at 5:00 p.m. I was a little bit late to that, and he helped shepherd the topics through. We had a number of topics that we talked about last Thursday, including the budget overview presentation that we'll hear this evening, new custodial services recommendation, recommendations on technology for the new elementary schools, as well as additional picnic table purchases, and an electrical easement as related to our elementary school additions. Our next meeting that's coming up is Thursday, May 20th, and that will be at the Board Office at 5:00 p.m. And again, we welcome the committee to, or I'm sorry, we welcome the community to attend that session. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. And next up, we have EEF, and I see Gretchen Ward is here.
Hello, everyone. Good evening. We are very excited to be here tonight with the EEF because we're here to share tonight a new campaign that we're launching, and we can't think of a better year than this year to kickstart it. It's called Thank a Teacher, Salute a Staff, and it will run from now until the end of the school year. I've brought with me the Thank a Teacher, Salute a Staff co-chair and EEF board member, Sharon Belabreditch, to share a little bit about the event or the fundraiser with you.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Sharon Belabreditch. I taught in the district here for 40 years, always first in the second grade, or either or, sometimes together. And I felt that it was an honor for me to be in the classroom with children. I've been retired now for 20 years, and I'm still teaching. I have music students that I teach each week. And people say to me, but, well, when are you finally going to retire? And I always say when they don't make me laugh anymore. And that's how I felt about children when I worked with them in the school district. When I came here, there were five elementary buildings, two middle schools, and one high school. And I've watched the Plymouth-Canton schools grow over the years, and I have always been proud. It never mattered where I went, to a meeting or to a developmental program or something that we had to learn about. And people would ask me where I was from, and I'd say Plymouth-Canton, and they'd go, "Oh." And it always made me proud. I was always so honored that I was able to be in the classroom with young children. In fact, I had this young man when he was six. So, and I lived through it.
And so did he.
We all know Plymouth-Canton Community Schools is wrapping up a school year like no other. Whether students were in the virtual academy or the Safe Start Program, school looked very different. The EEF appreciates all of the teachers, the staff, the administrators, cafeteria workers, paraprofessionals, custodial workers, and bus drivers that put in extra hours and adapted to the needs of all the students. We would like to help families recognize those that went above and beyond this year. Thank a Teacher, Salute a Staff is a way to say thank you and recognize those in the Plymouth schools whose contributions touched us this year. Perhaps it is the teacher who held extra Zoom calls after school, or the bus driver that greeted the students with a big smile behind their mask, or the principal that offered families words of encouragement or comfort during the many transitions. By donating to the EEF in honor of this person or people, your gift will not only recognize their many contributions, but allow the EEF to continue to support teachers, staff, and students in all of our buildings for years to come. This program was not available when I taught, but I know that I received many, many letters from parents, and they were precious to me. In fact, I don't have my will or any money or anything like that in my safe deposit box, but I do have all the letters that I've received from parents. That's how important they were to me. And now Gretchen will finish and let you know how you can help us.
So the details of the campaign is that it runs from now until the end of the school year. So for a $25 gift to the EEF, you can thank your teacher or staff person, and you can go right to our website to look for more information. And with the $25 donation, what the person will receive is their name on our scrolling screen up there. They'll receive a personalized thank you certificate. And what's very special about this is it's not just a certificate with their name. The person donating has a space to write a personalized message. And it has been my personal honor to create these certificates. And I am not too proud to say I've teared up writing some of them because of how much teachers, staff, we've had school crossing guards get nominated. So it's just amazing how much of an impact people can have, and this is just a wonderful opportunity to thank them. We also have a social media campaign where everyone who's thanked will get a shout-out on our Thank You Thursdays. And I just, I firmly believe that with all of the challenges this year and all of the changing and pivoting and frustrations we felt, there still was a lot of good and so much positive things that happened in our district. Why not end the school year on a positive note and remembering all of the things that did go well and how much we've grown this year? So for more information, again, you can visit our website, eefforkids.org. That's E-E-F-F-O-R-K-I-D-S.org. You can donate directly online with a credit card donation, or you can reach out to me at the Board Office with a check or cash donation. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, we are going to have administrative reports and recommendations. We will start out with Superintendent Merritt's report.
Thank you, President McCoy. I am pleased to acknowledge the accomplishments this evening of President McCoy, who has committed to investing in courses in preparation to enhance her board leadership skills. During the MASB, that's the Michigan Association of School Boards Recognition Ceremony, on April the 27th, President McCoy received the Certified Board Member Award, as well as the Award of Merit. Please join me in congratulating her at this time. President McCoy, we truly thank you for your continued commitment to enhancing your board leadership skills on behalf of our district, our students, and on for Michigan Public Schools in general. Thank you so much. This evening, I'd also like to share an accomplishment of one of our Plymouth High School teachers. That's Mr. Scott Milam. The Michigan Department of Education announced this week the educator selected as state finalist for the National 2021 Presidential Award for Excellence in Mathematics and Science Teaching. We are honored and proud that Scott Milam of Plymouth High School has been announced as one of six finalists for this esteemed honor. The six finalists will have their applications reviewed and scored at the national level alongside the finalists from other states. The 2021 PAE-MST application cycle was open to mathematics and science educators working primarily with students in grades 7 through 12. Congratulations to Mr. Milam for this recognition. We are so grateful for all he does to inspire students every day at the Park. Congratulations. To continue to brag about our students and our staff, as you know, the PCEP Hospitality and Culinary Arts Program has established a tradition of excellence using the skills they learn in Chef Diana Woodward's classroom to earn accolades at both the state and national levels. This year, despite a myriad of challenges due to COVID-19 restrictions, the culinary competition teams continued the program's winning ways after dominating the performance at the Team's Michigan Restaurant and Lodging Association competitions last month. PCEP teams nearly swept every category at the event. Mr. Brandon is showing the names of our students here on the screen and what they won. The first-place winners will advance to the event's national finals. Congratulations to Chef Woodward and all of the talented culinary students at the Park. I want to spend a few moments just giving an update on the MDHHS Order on Face Masks and Gatherings. Earlier this afternoon, I issued a family communication to our families, our students, our staff concerning the May 6th order. This emergency order addresses new rules related to mask-wearing while outside, general role capacity limits, capacity limits for gatherings, physical distancing, and other provisions regarding education and related services. As we always say consistently, we follow the health guidance of the health experts, the MDHHS, the Wayne County Health Department. This order actually came out on May 6th without any previous warning, and I've heard that people are asking, why is it taking us so long to make a statement? As you know, we need to work within our own system, talking with our building leaders, trying to make sure that we can find any event that this order applies to. With this order, you have to have less than 100 participants in order not to wear masks outside. So after meeting with our building leadership teams to determine which of our outdoor activities are currently impacted by this order, we announced that effective May 12th, that's tomorrow, PCCS will begin implementing this order, allowing students and staff to participate in outdoor activities of less than 100 persons without wearing face masks. So this change, however, is for outdoor activities only. This includes recess, our lunch recess that we have at the middle school levels, classes that happen to be held outside. Now, we still encourage our students and staff to make sure that they're utilizing physical distance when they're outside because contact tracing's still, the policies are still in place. Face coverings, though, are still required for all students and all staff while inside our buildings. Now, at any time, parents and guardians may still choose to have their students wear their masks outdoors. That will be something that we don't require that they take them off, but we will comply with the order that is currently in place. And that current order is in place through May 31st, 2021. And so we will stay tuned if there are any changes or extensions beyond that part. Additionally, the face mask requirements have been lifted for participants during active practice and competition for outdoor, non-contact organized sports. Participants in contact sports must, even if they're outdoors, remain masked. And in accordance with the MDHHS order, spectators that are at outdoor gatherings with fewer than 100 people are not required to wear their masks. However, masks will be in effect for events in excess of 100 persons. So, for example, we have our graduation ceremonies coming up. They will be here at the PCEP Varsity Field, just staying in advance. That will be the expectation that everyone will be masked because there will be well over 100 participants at that. We are really asking for the safety and well-being of our entire school community. We will have strict compliance with this requirement, and we ask that our families help us to enforce this requirement. One, I'm going to say exciting piece of information to share is that with MDHHS in conjunction with the Wayne County Health Department, we will host a vaccination clinic here at Canton that will be in Phase 3. This is going to be on May the 18th, and Mr. Brandon has a flyer up here, from noon until 6:00 p.m. This is, once again, at Canton High School in the Phase 3 building. There's a preregistration process that's required, so we'll have that information out. They will have the Pfizer vaccine. So upon getting vaccinated, you'll have the date automatically scheduled for three weeks out using the same facility to come back and get the second dose of the vaccine. As you've heard, most recently, the vaccination has been now authorized for students as young as 12. So when that takes effect, we will check with the Wayne County Health Department to see if we will be allowed to include those students in our vaccination clinic. At this point, we are advertising for 16-year-olds and up, and we will shift that requirement if we get the direction from Wayne County Health Department. Now, with this, there is a requirement for parents to sign the registration sheet for their students to be vaccinated. We are requesting that parents or guardians be here on-site with their students as well. But this is a great opportunity to support our community. This will not just be for students. This will not just be for students. This could be students, staff, family members, anybody in this Plymouth-Canton area. So this information will go out and we would just ask for anybody that is interested. It is a school-based clinic, so in terms of the number of vaccines that they have available, they will look at kind of a first come, first served for the vaccines that they have on site. So it's good for us to know how many people are interested in advance. Something else I'd like to share, on Friday, May 14th, we will be doing a district-wide greenout for Mental Health Awareness Month. Each of you as board members on your table should have a green ribbon. I ask that you join me. You can put that on now. And you're asking all students and staff to wear green to support this initiative on May 14th, making sure that we're continuing to remove the stigma and gain awareness and educate people on the importance of mental health issues and challenges as we've been facing here every day with our students. When we look at the isolation and just the stress of this pandemic, it truly does take a village and we want to make sure that we are having conversations. We're educating, we're providing resources. And in this month in particular, we want to work together to make sure that we're acknowledging and doing something to really bring this awareness. Final piece I wanted to share this evening is a communication that went out last week, I believe. This is from PCEP regarding the credit, no credit option at the high school. And I am definitely pleased to inform you that the high school learning design teams reached a unanimous decision to add flexibility to the grading policy at PCEP for the 2021 school year. This allows the choice of families for credit or no credit in lieu of a grade. So for the first and second semester, students who have an E grade will receive a no credit. That means that the student will not receive any credit for the course and there will be no impact to their GPA. Students who have a grade of A+ through D-, in a course will have the opportunity to keep the grade or choose credit for the class. Students who choose credit, have credit in the course, will earn credit towards graduation, but there will not be an impact on their GPA. The three high school principals sent out this communication to all families. If you have any questions concerning the requirements, I will ask that you direct that to the building level. But I think, you know, our students have been through a lot and we all have asked for grace throughout this pandemic. And this is one opportunity to provide that same grace to our students as they're continuing to work through the challenges of this school year. The final piece, I did say that was final, but I did want to announce again that we are having an exciting time, Bond 2020. Our excitement over Bond 2020 was taken from us that same night that the bond passed. That's when we had our first cases of COVID. But we are celebrating a groundbreaking event as we begin construction on our first three elementary schools. The groundbreaking event will take place on May the 17th, four, correct, four, because it's three, four schools. On May the 17th at 3:00, this will be at Hulsing Elementary School. So all board members will be there. We're actually inviting our students to participate in this event and we'll have a few words that will be shared. So just want to put that on the books for everybody to join us on May the 17th outside for our groundbreaking event at Hulsing on our new Bond 2020. And with that, I will end and address any questions that you may have if you have questions at this time.
All right, does anybody have questions?
Ms. Merritt, I don't know if you have the numbers with respect to quarantines. I've been paying attention to the daily case numbers in our community and they seem to be going down. And it looks like we're also seeing the number of cases are going down. Can you update us into our quarantine situation?
Yes, so I will, I've asked for the numbers and I may have to give the actual numbers at the end in the discussion section. But just in general, we have approximately 251 students out on quarantine this week. And you are absolutely right when we look at Wayne County, our positivity rate as according to today is 9.7%. We have 0.74% of an infection rate, which is definitely headed in the right direction. 26 new daily cases per 100,000. So as we've talked about at the last board meeting, we truly did peak on that third surge and now are consistently experiencing that decline. And so we want to continue to thank our entire school community for doing their part, making sure that everyone within our community are following mitigation factors and getting a handle, getting on the other side of this surge. And so the numbers are continuing to decrease each day and we're seeing that reflected in our schools as well with our daily cases. And we still make sure that we are communicating within 24 hours for anybody's reference on our website, all positive and probable cases. And then weekly, on Tuesdays, we update the website with the weekly quarantine numbers. So hopefully I will have the exact number by the time we finish this board meeting and I can answer your question.
Great. I just want to double check on the spread in the schools because I know we've rigorously applied our mask policy and the other mitigations that we have, including our ventilation. I know that we had a few cases earlier in the year. Have we seen any additional cases since we've last met as a board?
The last time that we were together, they were looking at a case, a suspected case at Isfister.
That's correct.
Um, we are currently looking at an athletic suspected case. And so I just heard of that this morning, so we'll have more information of that. But again, our mitigation factors are working. We continue to see low cases of transmission within our schools. So most of our positive cases are students that are being infected outside of school. They bring, come into school and we are notified and we make sure that we put our contact tracing efforts into effect and get the students quarantined appropriately. And we're not seeing that in school transmission on a long, on a large level.
And the last question I had on this is, how are the athletics testing processes? Are we still seeing positive cases there? I know we were seeing those initially. Are we still seeing positive cases in the athletic testing?
So today, for example, we had two positive cases in athletics. So we are still seeing them, but not at the rate that we were over the last few weeks. We're definitely reflective in the schools of what you see going on within our surrounding communities. So the cases are definitely decreasing as well.
And those are cases that we're catching through the athletic testing program that we have.
That is correct. And even within the guidelines, there are some shifts within athletic testing. So if a student is fully vaccinated, then they are now not required to participate in the weekly antigen or PCR testing within the district. So they are, once again, we continue to follow the requirements and the guidelines from the Michigan Department of Health and Human Services. We still have mandatory testing for athletes, but there are some exceptions to those students based on that order. We have to participate in that program.
Students that are vaccinated wouldn't have to quarantine either, correct?
That is correct. A student is vaccinated, fully vaccinated means two weeks after the second dose, they would not have to participate, or final dose if it's Johnson &amp; Johnson, would not have to close contact quarantine if they are identified as a close contact.
So for our younger students, unfortunately, even if they elect to take the vaccine, we'd be past the end of the school year before they would be counted as fully vaccinated.
That is the case. That is correct.
Thank you.
Anybody else have any questions?
Just one question, Ms. Merritt, can you update us on how the data was utilized at the building level? At our last meeting or maybe two meetings ago, we talked about cascading that information to the building level and then having them put in place action plans. Can you update us on what those action plans were?
I think those were shared in board notes, I want to say two board notes ago, two weeks ago.
Okay, thank you.
All right, anybody else? All right, thank you. So we will be moving on now to finance and operations. Very exciting.
It's that time of year again. So hello, I'm Debbie Piaz. I'm the Chief Finance and Operations Officer. And this starts our budget season. So as member Keough mentioned, we discussed this presentation on May 6th at our FNO and we'll have budget conversations probably every FNO all the way out. As you know, the Uniform Budgeting Act requires Michigan Public Schools to adopt a budget by June 30 of every year. In addition, we'll have a public hearing tentatively set for June 8th. And then a final resolution to the Board of Education will be June 22nd. So tonight, we're going to go through some financial updates in a very broad brush way. We'll talk about our 22, 21-22 budget development process and the impact of COVID-19 to it. We'll talk a little bit about state school aid enrollment and how federal funds play a role, as well as our budget process and next steps. As you know, every year, our financial statements are audited by an independent third party and it's Plant Maran LLC. And as of June 30, 2020, our school district's operating fund balance was approximately 39.5 million or approximately 23% of the total general fund expenditures. Now, the board policy requires that we keep a 10% total general fund expenditures, fund equity of 10%. The auditor's recommendation is usually between 10 and 15%, more at the 15% level. And one of those factors is also used in our bond rating and what determine our bonding rating, the borrowing rate that we are charged when we have to borrow money to construct facilities, which I know we discussed earlier. Ms. Merritt talked about the groundbreaking at Dodson, Erickson Field, and Hulsing. That's coming up next week. In the current fiscal year, fiscal year 21, we have projected mid-year. We had a January, I believe it was in first board meeting of January, January 12th. We projected that we'd be about $38.1 million or approximately 21.3. Our final amendment will occur in June, as I discussed. And the impact of COVID-19 and the release of state and federal funding, we're going to take a look at as well. In fiscal year 22, the impact of COVID will still be here. Federal funding is being discussed at both the state level and the federal level. As of now, the Consensus Revenue Estimating Conference, which we call CREC, is when the governor, the senate, and the house all release their budgets, they come together and come to consensus. The consensus hearing is held twice a year in January, and this year was held on January 15th. And the second one will be held on May 21st. They also talk about the Appropriations Acts and what we will have for funding under our Foundation Allowance Formula that we are currently funded in the state of Michigan. So this gives you an indication of in January, for the January Consensus Revenue Estimating Conference, what it looked like for 2021 from the state school aid funding standpoint. And this is all the state pot, that's the pie. And the largest piece of the pie is state sales tax at 43.7%. The next largest piece is income tax at 21.3. And the third largest piece is the state education tax, that's six mils on everyone's tax bill, and that's 15.9. As we discussed in FNO last week by member Brooks, yes, the lottery is a part, but it doesn't go a long way in paying for all the obligations of the state school aid fund. In January, they predicted then what would look, what it would look like in 21-22, and not much different. The state sales tax will be approximately 43.5%. The state income tax about 21.8. And the state education tax about 15.8. So even though we were confined to our homes for a lot of the year and didn't go to box stores, we went on the internet and we bought a lot of stuff. And the Amazon Prime guy came by the house most days and still delivered a lot of materials. And so then state sales tax really wasn't significantly negatively impacted during this time. We also have a component to our funding source is not only under the Foundation Allowance Formula, is the state aid piece, but it's also enrollment. So I wanted to spend a couple of minutes tonight just talking about our enrollment data. This is a 10-year historical look back of what our membership state aid is as defined in student FTEs. I talk in FTEs, full-time equivalent students, that's how we're funded. But Ms. Rail will talk about things in headcount. And so it's always greater numbers when Ms. Rail talks than when I talk. I talk about it on the funding level. And so as you see in this graph, 2010 to 2011 fiscal year, we were up almost 19,000 students. And we've slowly declined, not for any other reason except for birth rates. The birth rates are down in the state. And also the exodus out of the state has equaled out to the exodus in the state. So we're still seeing a small decrease over time. This year, 2021, we talk about the super blend. And it was a way that the state legislature softened the blow of the loss of students across the state. Across the state, we have about 1.5 million students and the state averaged about, I think it was 50,000 or so lost, like not anywhere. So we're hoping that they come back to the state and come back to Plymouth-Canton Community Schools. But because the super blend, we went from 17,396 to 17,218. But if we had counted the students as we normally would have, which is 90% of the fall count and 10% of the previous spring count, we would be at 16,639. So just wanted to show that how much the super blend really did assist us this year in school funding. Now, where we go to the future, when we roll the children who are here today, and if you were in first grade and you roll to second grade next year, third grade to fourth grade, et cetera, you'd be about 16,702. What we rolled was for staffing purposes because we have the virtual academy and some students in that virtual academy have already selected. And we've also rolled into this the maintaining the three feet social, or physical distancing, I should say, in the classroom, in the six feet physical distancing, in the cafeterias. So we're staffing this year based on 16,443. We always have a projection done by a demographer that takes into account house tops, new builds, the progression of students through the system, as well as the competition of charter schools and other options for education in our area. And that is Stanford and Associates is the name of the firm. He does a most likely, a high, a low, and then an average based on the high and the most likely. So he's averaging about 16,4, 16,2 in his estimates, which are typically conservative. I want to talk a minute about federal funding. So when I talk about the budget and I talk about the budgeted numbers, I'm talking about the general operating fund. That's the one that you have most control over. It doesn't, you know, the board decides how the budgets are adopted. Other funds we have here in the district are restricted as to use. The debt service fund, for example, is a tax where we levy the tax out and it pays the mortgage on the house, I call it. So when we go out and have bond issues, we have a number of millages that go directly to pay that underlying debt. Those are restricted funds. The other restricted fund we have here that's large is the federal funds. So usually IDEA, Title I, those, the various title funds are in that pot. And now with a lot of infusion of state and federal resources, you'll see how that shakes out fiscal year-wise. So in the year ended June 30, 2020, we received two pieces in our State School Aid Act. They were 11P called Coronavirus Relief Funds. They were just over $6 million. And the Section 103.2 District COVID Costs, that was like $214,000. That was used primarily for PPE and other costs we had in getting through last fiscal year. The fiscal year we're currently in, we have SER 1, 2, and 3, and we'll talk about those and how that's going to work. Federal Fund Care Act, SER 1, however you want to call it, we were allocated $797,150. But we had to share that with charter schools. So that allocation has been done based on that, the state allocation. And so we'll receive a little bit less than that. But at this point, we've spent that for mostly PPE. SER 2 funds are estimated at about $3.6 million. 43.6% of it has been released for us to use. The other has been held in abeyance by the state currently, as well as, we've also applied for over $4 million in our state school aid amounts that were allocated to us as well, and that was under SER 2. There is currently legislation pending on both sides of the aisle, both senate and house, about how to allocate that to Michigan Public Schools. We've filed the applications for the process, but we're awaiting the awards. As well as SER 3, which I am suggesting will probably not get resolved till after the fiscal year at this point. But we are projected to get at least, at least $8.2 million in the SER 3 funds. It could be as high as $1,093 per pupil, but we're awaiting legislative action, which I know was discussed today in the legislature as well. So more to come on that. But these are federal funds restricted for a specific purpose. The process we go through during the year is we adopt a calendar annually. And in the fall, we adopt that calendar, which talks about our assumptions and when our presentations will be and when we'll, when we'll talk to. and when we'll, when we'll talk to the Board of Education as a whole on budget. The budget packets are issued in the, uh, early spring. The finance department reviews those packets and then an initial budget is, uh, is, is developed. Um, and we had additional, uh, information this year based on COVID and all that impact to state school aid funds. The core team and the superintendent look at a wide range of scenarios and discuss those with the operate, uh, the Finance and Operations Subcommittee. Then the budget sessions are held, uh, were held virtually this year, again, um, with the leadership team, both on April twenty-eighth, May fifth and May sixth, with the entire group discussing, um, uh, and collaborating on investments and reductions to come up with a budget recommendation. So what's in the budget? Uh, as a revenue source, we're using the governor's proposal. The governor's current proposal is a hundred and sixty-four dollars per full-time equivalent student, uh, a decrease of section eleven D, which was a one-time-only categorical last year, of sixty-five dollars per pupil, and an increase in a declining enrollment stability fund of a hundred and thirty-nine per pupil. As you know, the, the house is at a hundred dollars per pupil, and the senate is at two hundred and fifty dollars per pupil. So we're trying to take the middle road at this point until it's resolved in the CREC in two weeks. The enrollment projections we just discussed, but generally, um, in January of twenty-twenty-one, we had, you know, year over year, we've lost about seven hundred and seventy-six FTE. The super blend helped cushion the blow, but on a long-term basis, the projections that the demographer has done will have continued losses of between two hundred and fifty to three hundred FTE annually. The grants were held at the prior year levels, and the enhancement millage continues to increase based on the tax base of about two percent per year. The revenue section, um, MIPSers is the Michigan Public Schools Employee Retirement System that has a base rate currently of twenty-eight point two-one. That's from, uh, uh, an amount of twenty-seven point five oh in the prior year. The hard cap is increased now to three point three percent. In the prior year, it was just about two. We've kept dental insurance and vision rates flat. According to contract with Durham School Services, our transportation costs are scheduled to increase about four hundred and sixty-four thousand dollars based on, uh, wages. Our, uh, custodial contract, which we'll discuss this evening, is based on the request for proposal that was done recently and will increase about six hundred and ninety-six thousand dollars. Our utilities have increased, not on rate, the rates were a long-term, um, contracts that we had with our providers. So the rates are good, it's the consumption that's been increased because of the airflow. And so as you increase the amount of air from the outside into the interior of buildings, you either have to heat it or cool it depending upon the, the weather, and so we've seen an increase in that of about a hundred thousand dollars. We've reinstated our textbook budget, about a million dollars on an annual basis. We also reinstated some one-time prior year reductions of about six hundred and twenty-one thousand dollars. We held again the staffing levels to prior year, prior year levels, which means, I'm looking at twenty-two, so I'm talking about this year, with the three-feet physical distancing. We've also assumed for an average of about fifteen teacher retirements, and then included about a million dollars of investments and reduc- and/or reductions from the transformations, um, meetings held with our leadership group in the last two weeks. So all that revenue becomes a hundred and eighty-one point three million dollars. Expenditures comes to a hundred and eighty-eight point seven million dollars, and, um, that causes us to have a net deficit of about seven point three, leaving us with a fund equity percentage of about sixteen point three percent. Again, within board policy, but a significant use, um, of fund equity. So what, this is what we, um, talked about in our leadership group meetings, is investments in twenty-twenty-one. Is, and, and on, in addition to that, and there were such strategic themes of the Board of Education that have been discussed, as mentioned earlier in the dynamic planning book. They all revolve around the safety and security of staff and students, so making sure PPEs provided, et cetera. The social emotional learning supports was an item that came up, uh, again and again through the various budget community forum surveys we did, as well as through our leadership group, the administration, as well as the Board of Education. Addressing unfinished learning due to COVID was one of the themes that, um, bubbled to the top, as well as the strategic themes of the Board of Education, um, equity and inclusion grounded in social justice and anti-racism, community engagement and partnerships, student-centered learning experiences, as, as well as becoming leaders and educational innovation. So here's our budget transformation results from last two weeks. From the middle schools, they want to invest in point-six FTE per middle school, there's five of them, um, for a total of two hundred and fifteen thousand dollars, and increase the emotional supports, uh, system by adding some, uh, support, uh, people, staff. The elementary, uh, group, um, wanted to increase the student support per professionals of about one point oh FTE per building, that's fourteen buildings, for six hundred and ninety-five thousand dollars. The park, the, wanted to invest in having one more counseling position, three FTE, um, for a grand total of three hundred and fifty-nine thousand dollars. And the trade-off in the process was to suspend one more year of capital outlay purchases at elementary, middle and high school. So it's one of those things where all the, all the people had the same thoughts about really shoring up our social emotional, um, supports at all levels, with staff and students. And it's one thing that came up both in the community forums, is six of twenty-two items in there, talked about social emotional supports. It bubbled up to the surface during this process as well. And then they were able to, because of the bond issue, were able to use a lot of our bond money towards capital outlay, so they felt that they could do without one more year. And then two hundred and forty thousand dollars is about ten thousand dollars per building that was previously allocated. So this total of one million dollars is included in the deficit that I discussed earlier. So next steps, we're going to continue to plan and develop a plan that both evaluates current programs for effectiveness and talks about how to invest in these social emotional supports. We're gonna preserve our fund equity, our general fund dollars, sorry, for future flexibility, and really use the restricted funds, the federal funds, to the fullest extent possible. We're gonna also utilize our fund equity surpluses for one-time-only expenditures and try not to utilize those for ongoing structural deficits. We'll look at savings from this fiscal year, June thirty, twenty-twenty-one, due to the, the lack of full-time school, I'll call it, uh, in-person full-time school, um, and reduce, um, that, uh, moving forward, we'll take that, uh, savings and move that forward. We'll continue to staff the assignments to meet the three-feet physical distancing and identify other savings and reductions a- across the way as we move towards bringing you, uh, more detailed analysis of the budget, and then finally do the public hearing and then do the final resolution process. Because I have the mic, I'm gonna just, I mentioned, there's a lot of questions that have come up during this process about what's general fund and what's not. And here's what the ba- bond planning is, um, currently in process. This will be separate restricted funds used for a specific purpose, not the general fund. But I just wanted to mention this because there's a lot of questions as to, you know, what, what pot of money, um, i- is coming out of the bond. And so here's the summer, this summer projects that we talked about before. It'll be four classrooms at Dotson, furniture and playgrounds at all four buildings. It'll be new secure entryways in main offices, gyms and two classrooms at Erickson Field and Helsing. Then next year, uh, starting the planning part process, this year though, um, to bring to the board in September and October will be Salem High School, will get a theater refresh with two dressing rooms, um, and a green room and some, a scene shot. Plymouth High School will get a new auditorium and a new multipurpose room. The summer of twenty-two projects will be Byrd and Smith, they'll get the gyms, the two classrooms, the learning commons, the furniture and the playgrounds. And Miller will get a new sec- new secure entryway in addition to those items. That's all I had for this evening to bring to you. I'll bring to you, uh, more detailed, uh, analysis, uh, as we move forward, but I wanted to get your feet wet in the budget process as we're progressing towards June thirty.
All right, thank you. Uh, Patrick?
Wow, I guess, uh, my, my reputation precedes me. Um, Mi- Ms. Piaz, thank you for yourself and all the staff and all the hard work that went into this. I know it's very complicated. I know there's still a lot of unknowns with respect to the federal budget. There's one thing I wanna call attention to in this process, and that is the work that we're doing on the three-foot physical distancing and the six-foot in the, uh, lunchroom. I know that we're all expecting and hoping that we will, uh, have COVID disappear and that we will have vaccinations and the cases will not be here. But those are done in, in, in place so that we can have full-time school, uh, in person at every level, uh, next year. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, great. I just wanna make sure that everybody's aware that that is the reason we're doing that. So in the event that the variants spike or we have some other problem that requires us to do this, we can take the learnings that we've had this year and can continue, uh, in-person school and, in- including lunches at the, a- at all levels.
Correct.
Thank you.
And since you mentioned lunch, the other thing that's, the USDA has just recently done is extended the universal feeding for all, but with specific guidelines. We're still digesting all the different guidelines, but that'll be through June thirty, twenty-twenty-two.
Well, that's fantastic, 'cause we had asked before about making that available for everybody, even those students that might not have, or those families that might historically have not, uh, um, met the threshold. So that's really fantastic.
Yep.
If, if you can share with us in, uh, in board notes or whatever, what those stipulations are, 'cause that, that would be great for us.
I believe they're in the development stage.
Okay, fair enough.
More to come.
Fair enough.
But I certainly will when I get them.
Okay, that's really great news. Thank you.
Anupam?
Thank you. I don't have any questions, but I do want to, um, say thank you for walking us through those complicated procedures and numbers. You made it sound really easy and understandable, so thank you for that. And I wanna thank Superintendent Merritt and the team for investing in our kids with regard to social emotional support, as we've talked about quite a bit, and, um, making sure that our classrooms are ready for the fall. So thank you for those investments.
All right, Sean?
Uh, no questions.
All right, Doug?
Yeah, I'd just like to thank you for the presentation that you did today, especially the part about the, on the pie chart of how much we spend and, or how much we get in all the different categories. Thanks.
Sure. Lauren?
No further questions, thank you.
Great. Uh, so I really don't have any questions. Um, this is beautiful. I really appreciate having the, the copy I can write on, which is very nice. And just for, just for people who are not aware of how schools are actually funded, many people are still under the assumption that we are getting all this property tax revenue, when indeed it just goes to the state and then it's given back to us in a per-pupil allowance, which, just by the way, we get the lowest level. Um, so just keep that in mind. Um, we are, we are pretty lucky. We have, um, representatives and a state senator who do advocate for us to get additional funding. So, um, this really shows how much work Ms. Piaz and her team do to stretch the dollars we get into what we do have. So it is just, I think it is amazing amount of work that I don't know that people really understand. This is, this is amazing. And I would also like to thank, uh, Ms. Merritt, her team, and Ms. Rail for all the work they're doing to support our students and families, um, to get through all this trauma of COVID.
Patty, I have one more.
Okay, go ahead.
I just also wanted to call attention to this, 'cause it's, it's very good that, that Ms. McQuine pointed this out. This is a budget with a structural deficit. We're using planned use of fund balance. This is non-sustainable for us. We will not be able to do this long-term. So we, we believe that these are the investments that we have to make in our district and our community, but without changes coming from the, those legislators that support us and those in, and the others in Lansing, this will become unsustainable. The only reason that we're able to even make this stuff happen is because the community supported us with the renewal of the recent, uh, uh, millage, and that was very, uh, uh, appreciated. And the legislature and the state has still maintained our funding levels this past year, but we're not keeping up with what we need to be. The research collaborative that determined the cost to educate students is about ninety...
Ninety-six hundred.
Ninety-six hundred dollars a year to do an adequate education, not a great education, an adequate education. We're about fifteen hundred dollars a student per year off from that, so that's a substantial amount of money. So just feedback for those in the audience, those watching at home, that this will be problematic for us in future years.
And I just wanna mention too, that that ninety-six fifty did not include special education, uh, ELL or English language learners. It didn't include transportation. Those were still studies that had to been done. And so, um, yeah, it's, it's, we're significantly behind that. And so if you take that, that difference and multiply it by the number of students, we'd have significantly higher dollars in order to do what we need to do to educate students.
Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, next up, we have, um, custodial service, um, RFP recommendation, presentation.
So, um, this evening, I would like to introduce, uh, Greg Wall. He's the Director of Educational Services at ABM. He's gonna introduce you to his firm and, uh, talk about the custodial overview, um, in the process and the, uh, request for proposal process that we have under, undertaken. Um, this has been a six-month journey in which we, our, our current contract with our current provider is ending on June thirty, twenty-twenty-one. And so, um, we went out for a request for proposal, had three or four rounds of interviews. And, uh, Mr. Wall is here to entertain your questions, but first, inter- um, give you an inter- um, an overview of the firm and part of the proposal process.
Just wanna start out by saying to the, uh, members of the board, um, our leadership here, faculty and staff and stakeholders here, thank, thank you for the opportunity to present. Um, it was, it was a long diligent process and it was a great process. But at the end of the day, we still have some more work to do. And just to get to the next step, which means we have a lot more work to do. So, you know, I wanna give you a brief overview of who we are and then certainly answer, uh, any questions you may have. So first off, I'm gonna start off by introducing just the, the, the team that's gonna be supporting you. I, I'm, I'm the Director of Educational Solutions, so I, I head a point person of business development. Todd Fleming will be, be directly responsible for your, uh, global management, uh, and he's lo- locally oriented here, he lives in Rochester. Kyle Felenbaum is also local. He's, is the Regional Vice President and our local operations leader, again, local. Uh, but we also brought into the, to the equation both Eric Hudson's, our senior VP, and Valerie Byrd, our President of Education Group, uh, to un- to make them understand the importance of the success of this operation. So we brought in a lot of people to make sure that we had the right people in place and the right programs in place for you. One of the, one of the biggest things that we face in our industry is the, the hiring process and certainly the recruitment and the retention piece. And we use a multi-source recruitment program. We're, we're, we're very good at it. It's, it's, uh, a talent acquisition team was put in place for Plymouth Canton Schools the, the moment your RFP was received, uh, just knowing the size and the importance of this opportunity. So, uh, we, we're also very careful in our selection process and professional interviewing. The candidate screening, uh, is also very critical, standard background checks, uh, drug screening, and any additional screening that is requested. So, uh, employee retention is also huge. Uh, you know, i- it's a lot of training, um, and, and process improvements in competitive wages, which we'll talk about further. But one of the things that we kinda brag about is, again, a very challenging industry that we have in custodial services, but we, we can point to the closest partner that we have that, that kind of identifies with your schools, Ann Arbor schools, and the average tenure over there is three point one years. So for a custodial, uh, FTE, that's pretty impressive. So when we put together a proposal, one of the things that you have to be very, uh, not cognizant of it is what's the rage rate as it relates to the retention piece. You know, we, we, we do a lot of, of factors in terms of investigation, it's not guesswork. Uh, a, a custodial position or equivalent position, uh, in this case for the Canton or Plymouth Township area was conducted with different levels of experience. From that, in our experience, we can tell what a, a mean average wage rate would be. And that, that again is the average wage rate for the district. So for, for the Economic Research Institute, it calculated that Plymouth Canton Schools had a, had a mean, uh, average wage of fourteen dollars and twenty-three cents. So, w- one of the things that we put in place was an average bit of fourteen eighty-two. Um, and, and that, that number is an enhancement, obviously, of that economic research number. But as you can see from a district that was pretty successful next door, you're almost a dollar higher an hour. So that's a good thing for you to know that, that we, we value your opportunity that much, that we, we have investment in our staff in that, in that manner. So this is, this is also something to know that it's not guesswork. So this is also something to know that it's not guesswork. This is something we're super proud of. It's our quality assurance program. It's called SITE. It's an iPad-based software system. You have a minimum of twenty-five inspections per week, per manager. In the proposal that we put together for PCCS, you have four managers. So that means you'll have a hundred independent inspections every week. And when I say a hundred, it's not ninety-nine. Because at ninety-nine, bells and whistles go off and people with big titles start getting upset. So it's a hundred inspections a week. We utilize those as an internal process to really grade ourselves, to understand where we're succeeding, maybe where we're falling behind. Utilizing that for trend analysis, utilizing that for benchmarking. And a lot of that stuff is not maybe necessarily where we're doing something wrong. It may be, you know, we're missing high points and we realize that the member we have up there, the person we have working, is just not tall. So, you know, it's a different level of equipment and a telescoping mop. Just different ways to understand the KPIs that we're dealing with. So these reports are generated, they're communicated internally. But again, they're part of the process that we have opened doors, transparency with our leadership. So operations or business in terms of leadership, even to the board level, if you wanted to receive a copy of that report, they're kicked out very often. Don't necessarily want to gum up your inbox, but it's something that we do often communicate with district personnel so they can keep an eye on how we're grading ourselves, which quite often is pretty, I mean, we can be harsh on ourselves, there's no question about it. So here's the aspects of funding that we put together for you, utilizing a program that was a little bit different than what you asked for. And the reason we did it that way is, again, to support one of your main initiatives, which was cleanliness, certainly through employee retention. The RFP program, as it was stated, did not calculate a service day platform of two-hundred-and-sixty days. But we felt in our price point that it would be important to have an employee that was working the full year. There wasn't days off, and there was opportunities for paid time off. And that two-hundred-and-sixty days represented the opportunity for us to do that. You combine that with a good wage, and what you end up seeing is a solid uptick in that retention piece, which, again, you know, it just in complete transparency is a challenge for all of us in our industry. And so when we put together the programming for you guys, it was matching staffing as defined by the RFP. So one of the things that we wanted to quantify is at least how we come together with our staff and how we make that staff effective. The first off is just having local management. I mean, that's just huge. I mean, we're a big company, but being out of Troy, Michigan, we're, you know, twenty-three miles down the road. So, I mean, it's, everybody lives in the area. Our staff will live in the area. It's nice to have that access to that SWAT team approach if anything were to happen. Our account management will be dedicated to you and you alone. We'll have elevated salaries. So the salaries that we spelled out, even the starting wage of the account manager will be an elevated wage, and the three managers underneath will be elevated wages with company vehicles as well, and we'll spell those out for you. We included the weekend rates, which was in the RFP, thirty-two hundred additional hours as requested. And then the absentee plan, you know, this is an interesting element of ABM. Eight hundred hours were included as part of your RFP, and that's just what was dictated. But one of the things that ABM does is it includes one custodian for every ten you hire as bench support. And they're included in our model from the day we start, and they don't leave. So you have, say, eighty-four general pre-COVID custodians. You're going to have eight, eight and a half extra FTE vetted through the system, vetted and approved through PCCS, and as part of the plan, day one. And what those people do is they're going to pick up for that call-off, that sick call, the absentee where, you know, you just need to pick up some support. And that's going to happen. There's no question about it. At the end of the day, if we're on the plus side of eighty-four, that's positive because we can get into some project work or some deep clean work or special projects from, you know, Superintendent Merritt, however we want to handle it. That may or may not be the case, but understand that we've put an absentee plan in place to make sure that we're staffed as effectively as we can be. The final point of this is that we were given, again, your staffing rates and this chart at the bottom will show you that, based on our suggested productivity rates, you guys fell right in the sweet spot for what the staffing level should be. So congratulations to you and your operations team. So again, here's the breakdown of the staffing summary. You'll have an account manager at ninety thousand dollars a year. Again, this is with the full benefit package, company car. Zone managers will be fifty thousand dollars each. There'll be three of them at fifty thousand dollars a year with a company car. Base wage, you know, for the day custodians, mid-shift and second shift custodians at fourteen twenty-five an hour. Going to give your nightly custodians and your third shift folks a little bit of a bump. And then we have the COVID cleaners, the extra additional twenty, that were a part of the custodial RFP at sixteen dollars an hour. And again, these are all two-hundred-and-sixty service days outside of your COVID cleaners. Here's your staff and management plan. And the reason that I kind of wanted to include this, it's obviously something you found in your proposals, but is really what you see above the account manager. It's the ability to have access to the resources to the right and left of your logo there. And specifically to the left, you know, even the operation being custodial, ABM is a full-fledged provider of things like grounds and landscaping services along with facility operations and maintenance. It's not part of the lens of this RFP, but we can help you be a subject matter expert if needed. Already know you have those services covered. You've got some great leadership at the top as well. But it's something that you could look at in your partnership with us moving forward as something to value. Phase N talks a little bit about our transition plan. You know, the interesting thing is we already started our transition plan, again, the moment we received the RFP. It just, the district dictated that kind of service. So thirty to forty-five days beforehand, we were working on the project, recruiting, getting management in place, looking at equipment levels. You know, in this case, you're providing all the equipment, it's a labor-only contract. The transition, looking at it as a thirty-day, sixty-day period. But more importantly, the ongoing. You know, the transition doesn't stop. Just because you guys opened up the doors doesn't mean we don't stop talking. So we tend to have a lot of meetings. There's transition meetings. They may be calls with your leadership, your stakeholders. We'll design those as based on your recommendations. They may be once a week. They may trickle down in your, in month, three, four, five, you know, every other week. But we're going to keep the communication up to make sure that the transition is smooth, as smooth as possible it can be, because any transition is going to have a bump or two. So that kind of lines up with our core values of our partnership. You know, one of the things that we looked at is really understanding how this can be a partnership. ABM is very, I guess the word, to be blunt, is particular about who we work with, as you would hope you'd want us to be. We have a client retention rate of ninety-seven percent. And through COVID, that rate is maintained the same. So we're real proud of that. But we also want to be part of the community. In an effort to be part of the community, we also included in our annual contract scholarships for each of the high schools, the amount of five thousand dollars. So that's an annual scholarship program that goes for the life of the contract. And that just kind of helps stipulate who we want to be as part of the team, as part of the community, because it's not just, you know, a bunch of us. It's the faculty, staff, it's the moms and dads, it's the grandparents and the grandparents, it's the aunts and uncles, it's everybody here. And we're all part of that, and we're just hoping we can be part of that team. So that's kind of the way we put our proposals together and our service platforms together. And that gives us a little bit of an idea of who we are. And that's kind of an overview of us and certainly love to answer any questions if you have any.
All right, Patrick?
So the first thing I want to clarify is, I was just looking through the proposal that was there. In the proposal, it mentioned our high schools at five thousand dollars, and you mentioned this here. We also discussed it the other afternoon. We actually have four high schools in the district. Are you going to update that to reflect?
Yes, we'll honor the four high schools for sure.
Okay, great. I just want to make sure that we're covering all four high schools. My next question is on the surveys and the evaluation process. And I want to understand what does good look like to ABM? And what do you consider passing scores in that survey process? And what do you do when you don't have passing scores?
Sure. We measure our inspections through a program through APA, which is the Association of Physical Plant, and the categories of criteria are graded one through five. And they're documented, if you want to look them up, APPA. We look at programs, in a lot of the cases, the APA level may be defined. For example, one is, it's a medical, you can eat off the floor, it's so clean. Five is, obviously, it's in big trouble. We will quote any level of customer-defined APA level up, including two and a half, nothing below that. So if, and we do have clients that request APA three services because there's a cost associated with doing it the right way. We just won't do it that way. So our APA level, our goal for APA is to be between two and two and a half. The surveys and the inspections are based on that understanding, the scopes of work are defined. So each manager understands exactly what they're doing when they're going through those surveys. Again, as I mentioned earlier, we're very hard on ourselves in those surveys. So one of the things I try to tell leadership is, don't look at it like we think we're failing. We're just kind of hard because we have to ramp things up in a quick manner. And, you know, you can't, you can't, management is not about micromanagement, it's about coaching. It's about mentoring. It's about, you know, understanding the issues we face. I mean, one of the things I always look at is the principals. Principals are like the CEOs of the building, and each one of them has a different hot button. You know, understanding exactly what those things are. I mean, these are the things that are key. But all of that stuff, if you have all that local knowledge and it's not loaded into some platform so that you can articulate it or grade it or measure it or benchmark it, or at least understand it for trend analysis, you wasted all of that. So that's why we use what we use.
So your numbers are going to be between two and two and a half at the APA score. Then do you grade that as ten percent? You know, how do you actually measure that?
If you're looking at, if you're achieving those numbers, you're probably in the area of eighty-five to ninety percent. For us, like, an eighty-five percent is a passing grade. Anything below that is not.
Okay.
And those standards can be, those are, again, those are internal standards for us. So we're setting parameters based upon being able to say one hundred percent of the time, I'm achieving an APA level that I feel comfortable with based on district expectations. Understanding the district expectations here are hugely important. So that has not been misstated in any communications I've had with anyone. So yes, that is the case. We will put a grade to it.
So on a given criteria, it's a pass/fail on that whether you've met that APA score? And then your eighty-five to ninety percent is based upon the cumulative score of the entire inspection?
Correct.
Okay. So if you're supposed to be at a two and a half, and that one has not achieved that, then that's a zero on that process. And then cumulatively, when you look at your scores, you would say, okay, in this area, we did not meet our expectation. And so therefore, that one is a zero, and then you average it across everything that you do.
Yeah, I don't think we use it that quantitatively. I think with the way we use it is more for the trend analysis. So if we're seeing a lot of eighties and seventy-fives or a lot of nineties and ninety-fives, we can understand trend analysis, and it helps guides us into the inspection process. The inspection process, all the geography of every building is loaded into this system. Every room, its purpose, what it has in it is loaded into that room. When an inspection occurs, the twenty-five inspections are generally, each inspection will point you in a direction of something. It'll give you an example of something. It's not going to give you every room. So it'll spit out what it wants you to look at, and then you'll be grading these things, to understand how they're being cleaned. You know, are the windowsills clean? Is the floor clean? Check the floor corners, are they clean? Then that data is compiled, and you can have that. First off, it's recorded. Second of all, you're looking at it for trend analysis, but you're not necessarily, we're not utilizing it to say you're failing. That wouldn't be terminology we would use.
I really appreciate the fact that you're focused on continuous improvement and addressing the process. I think that's exactly the right thing to do. But at the same time, we want to make sure that we are meeting the expectations that we have for clean. And, you know, we've not always been able to do that. And so I think expectation management is obviously key here, and I think that there's been a lot of work that's gone into this in terms of what that is. Having these industry standard scores in terms of what's part of this process is key. But I'm still a little bit unclear in terms of how you're measuring that, and then how do you make sure that you are achieving those processes and providing the additional training or the additional support for those situations where you're not meeting them?
Yeah, you know, from the standpoint of at least writing the overview of what it is, you know, I can give you that piece. You know, how they analyze the data piece, I'd have to get more of an operational viewpoint on that. And I can get that data for you, but it's probably not something that I'm diving in deep enough for you.
It'd be great if you could just get somebody that could provide us that information to make sure that we, as a part of the FNO committee, as part of the board, we have regular presentations about this to make sure that we are meeting our expectations on clean. And I know that there's a commitment to do those presentations to the board on, I think it's three times a year, if I remember correctly. So we just want to kind of understand what those would look like and how you're measuring that as part of that process.
Absolutely.
Thank you, sir.
Anupam? Thanks. Actually, along those same lines, you mentioned that Ann Arbor is a customer of yours. Can you share an example from Ann Arbor or any other customer with regard to what the KPIs look like and how often you present those to the board?
In the same manner. You know, they're presented, and again, the KPIs and the inspection services that we're doing are internal documents. They're not necessarily made for your viewing, but you're transparent to it. You know, it's a document that we're using as an internal system. We have a, for example, like, we have a principal report card. And a principal report card, it has a QR code that the principal can scan and go right into a little inspection once a month, create a report by touring the building. We try to do something like that. That's something where you're going out with us and inspecting. You know, the KPIs that we're following are defined by, you know, what Ann Arbor has set up with our operations folks, and I wouldn't be necessarily privy to that. But again, I could probably help you understand that a little bit.
Right, right.
Again, it's an internal document for us. It's not, we want to be as transparent. It's just an internal inspection, that's all.
So with Plymouth Canton, would we have an opportunity to see that?
Our inspection?
Yes.
Absolutely, absolutely. And normally, it would be Director of Operations who would have that and then funnel down through however you wanted it. You can put in as many emails as you want, hit send, and it'll go everywhere, for sure. But we would still also come to the board to have three presentations like we have in the past with JRBS.
Great.
So that's still going to happen three times a year.
Thank you. My next question is, what percentage of the market share do you have with regard to school districts in Wayne County?
I would say it's fairly low to average. You know, we're not necessarily a company that bids every single job. We probably have in the area of fifteen hundred employees, probably within an hour of Ann Arbor. Market share data, I would have at my fingertips, but I would guess somewhere in the area of what is currently outsourced, maybe ten, twelve percent. And to that end, there's companies that have more than we do, for sure.
All right, thank you. Sean?
Yeah, just really more of a comment. I appreciate my colleagues' focus on making sure that we, you know, maintain the standard of excellence. You know, sometimes things come out of really bad situations like a COVID, and I think the hyper-focus on the cleanliness of the schools is one of those things. So I think what you're hearing is we don't want to backtrack in that in any way, shape, or form. So I appreciate that. I do appreciate your hyper-local focus on employment. I think that that's really strong, your partnership approach. And I think the, you know, the three-year average term or employment for the employee says a lot, you know, about your company as well. So I really did appreciate your presentation.
Thank you very much.
Doug?
Yeah, I was concerned about your being open to critics in the district of, because we have, in the past, we've heard from, like, teachers and certain people in the buildings that I keep seeing this dirty and, you know, I'd like it finally clean. And then we've had some other, like, pass board members that say, well, we need, like, the vents cleaned. They still haven't been cleaned. Every time we go through KPI, we see that they're not clean. So I was wondering if you're open to a lot of people who don't necessarily aren't professional cleaners, but they know what they want in their room, and they'd like to see a nice, clean room. And it may come down to different rooms having a different level of cleanness, some overcleaned and some normal, like, you know, average.
Sure.
So I was just kind of wondering if you're open for that.
It's a great question. You know, ideally, Mr. Brooks, we would love, I want to know exactly, every single person. I mean, the level of staff you have would be such that that would be very challenging. However, through the process of communication in your CMMS system or through the process of communication with your leadership, we will do everything in our power to change, make flexible, augment, tweak, do whatever we have to do. One of the things you mentioned is event support. The only thing we really need in those regards is good communication, which is, you know, hey, we got something that crept up. We're going to need a little bit of support over here. We need four thousand chairs set up by Friday night. I don't, you know, I don't care what you need, we need to get it done. Here we go. You know, the one thing you'll not hear from anybody at ABM is that's not in my contract or that's not my job. You'll never hear that. But to the point of customization... But to the point of customization of work, yeah, absolutely. That's kind of the thing I mentioned about, you know, the building principal/CEO thing, is that different principals have different hot buttons. And it's, you know, it's the ceiling tile, it's the window sills, it's the floor in the wax. It's, it could be a million different things. Knowing that is huge. And we want to know that as much as we can. It's just, sometimes you have to temper it a little bit. You know, because there's one thing that we can't ignore or ever get, get rid of is the, hey, you. It's the, you're walking down the hall and somebody grabs you, hey, can you, can you just do this for me? And the answer is generally, yeah, well, yeah, I gotta help you, for sure. Normally, you want to follow the process, which is the organization of how you would communicate the work orders, as you would normally do. It's never going to be a perfect system in that regard, so we do have to be flexible.
Yeah, I was just concerned, like, whether, you know, we say, well, you know, see, oh, this, this is dirty, and you come back and say, well, I don't see it. It's not dirty.
Yeah.
You know, that kind of stuff. And I have another question, but I can't, I can't remember it right now.
Mr. Brooks?
Yes.
Oh, down here. So we're, we're committed to still using the work order system we currently have called SchoolDude for our facility repairs and maintenance items. And they're also committed to learning our new Google Doc system that we have collaborated with our PCEA leadership in developing. So they'll continue to use those two communication methods that we currently are using on a going-forward basis.
Okay, thanks.
Lauren?
Yeah, I was wondering if you could elaborate on what the transition plan looks like.
Sure. You know, the, again, the transition plan is already started. I mean, it's certainly behind the scenes. Based on the first, the first time you get the award, the notification, you instantly want to have, we want to have a town hall, because the staff's going crazy. There may be some that have already gone crazy and left. But at the end of the day, we need to get here as soon as we can to alleviate fears, tamp down trepidation, and make sure everybody understands that there's a place here for them with ABM. In fact, I'm hoping that I'm going to be able to say, you're all going to get a little bump in increase. That's the plan. But at the end of the day, and that's based on the investment of you guys for the contracts, but understanding that, that the heart, the first thing we want to do is, is bring all the existing staff back over. A lot of the times, districts will say, you know, there's some people over here I'm not real sure about. We say, hold on. You know, let's, let's, let's bring everybody in here. Let's see if we can coach them up. The rubber will meet the road in 30, 60 days, and we'll find out what's going on, whether or not. But you know, let's just bring everybody on board. The management structure, the training structure, the safety programming, equipment usage, and the training of equipment is so much more vast that they're going to have the ability to be working smarter, not harder. And that's, that's the plan and the goal. But that's, you know, the transition is, is an ongoing thing. It, you know, it starts, the longer you can do, you know, set it up, the better. You know, background checks and getting people passed is the hardest part, and that takes time. But we need to, we need to get through that. Bringing in additional staff and filling the back rows, we started that months ago, because we knew it was going to be an issue. So, you know, even in lieu of the award, at the end of the day, we'll find somebody for them to go. But we started recruiting, we put a talent acquisition team together for Plymouth Canton Schools, probably mid-April, first of April.
Thank you.
So board members asked most of my questions, because I was going to ask about the staffing. So I'm glad to hear that you are trying to retain.
Mm-hmm.
So if you have to hire additional cleaners, that you need to fill in some spots, are you going to prioritize people who understand cleaning in a school is maybe different than cleaning in an office?
Oh, absolutely. Yeah, there's no question of that. It's night and day. You know, you certainly value experience. We work in a very challenging labor market, and that's just where we're at. So we have to be, we have to focus more on our ability to manage and train. Ideally, if I could have 100% of the staff be custodial efforts within education markets, I win, absolutely. But the reality of it is, is that's probably not going to be the case, but certainly the focus.
Okay, thank you so much. The rest of my questions have been answered already, so thank you. This is a very enlightening presentation. Patrick?
I had some questions, and thank you, Lauren, for answering those on the transition. I'm concerned that, I think it's probably more for the administration on the transition. I'm hearing reports and feedback, you know, obviously this is anecdotal and informal, that we're having some struggles with the transition already. How are we, what are our options? How can we make sure that we manage and maintain clean through the end of this school year? Because it looks like we've got some problems right now.
Jamia?
So we're partnering with, we're actually meeting with Jason with JRBS, pushing to try to get a, like, on a talent pool area, basically pulling from a group of cleaners outside to bring them in to continue staffing. So like, kind of a buddy system, partner a new person with an existing person that is there. We are meeting with our PEs constantly to try to make sure that we're walking buildings to get things ahead of time. But it is a challenge, 100%.
So I guess, Craig, from your perspective, how is, what's best practices on managing this? You guys have lost contracts before. What do you suggest for districts that it might be choosing you? Or what do you do for the, in districts where you've left? How, what might we best approach this?
Yeah, you know, I'll be, I'll tell you the most recent one, is Southfield Public Schools. And we worked our, to the very end of the contract to that very day, and with very minimal staff loss. And in fact, we've rebid them, and are recently in discussions with them, and talking about an RFP as well. So these things happen. It's a very challenging environment. I would hope that you would act like a professional on the way out, as the way in. That said, what I have, what I may have to do is find resources for you, or help you in that regard. I certainly don't know what the situation is, or what the impact is. But anything we can do, we have been in that situation before, as recently as this year, and numbers of accounts, it's not anything new. There's, there's ways to combat it. It's generally through just finding staffing companies and managing up staffing folk, and seeing if you can transition them. It's generally about the same price. It's not necessarily going to be 100% at full capacity. I think you may have to brace yourself for that fact, that, that may not be the eventuality here. But you, with proper management, you may be able to limp through it without any noticeable impact, hopefully, to the community and the faculty and staff.
So this is my third time through on a transition. And so the key is to communicate to the existing staff that we'll have an opportunity to, you know, to work for the new firm. The covenant not to compete only really apply to those leadership positions that are on salary basis. So the hourly can move to the new firm. So we'll communicate that as quickly as possible, as soon as the board resolves that issue. And then we'll move forward. The professional staffing firms we talked about are specifically for short-term processes. And so we're meeting with our existing firm tomorrow to discuss bringing those on board to shore up the numbers. And so we make sure that we maintain our numbers and are clean within our buildings for the next 25 days of the school year.
Okay. And towards the end, since this is only a first read, we're going to be two more weeks before we have the second read. Are you able to notify the staff, or provide that messaging to them, that there will be future opportunities?
We can do so if the board wants us to. We have flyers already prepared, and they wanted to send those out as soon as possible, so.
I don't think that we've made a specific decision, but I, I think that notifying them would be important to make sure that we retain the, the staff. I don't see, if for whatever unlikely reason we don't approve this, then you don't have a commitment to them, but you're putting them on notice that there isn't an option there. Because there may be a rumor mill, or there may not be awareness that, that there are going to be options for them.
And potentially better options.
Okay. Patty, do you see any struggles with us having them send that notice out now?
Well, we haven't voted. We haven't actually taken any action. I mean, what would that commit us to?
I don't think it's necessarily a commitment. I think it's just...
It would just be a flyer introducing the firm in a future hiring fair.
Potential future hiring.
Yeah.
I don't think we want...
It would set some people's minds at ease, that there is a potential for them to have a position.
Is that a commitment more from the district? You know, as a whole versus a specific firm? Would that cover us a little bit better, since we haven't voted, to have it come from the administration to say, we're committed, that regardless of who is selected, that, you know, we're committed to that? You understand what I'm saying? So that it's not so much one specific firm? Because what does happen if it's not approved, that could backfire. But I do agree, we need to get some kind of communication out to prevent, you know, some kind of mass exodus, or even a small exodus, for that matter.
So you have to be careful that you're not extending over the third party? Because they're, they're a contractor of ours, and so you don't want to look at it like the employer. But it would just be a flyer from ABM saying, you know...
Yeah, I mean, it could be something as, we have submitted a bid. We have the hope and desire to win this process. If that happens, then you, we would welcome the chance to include you as part of this process. Then it's, there's no commitment, there's no guarantee that that win is going to happen. But it sends a clear message to the, to the employees that they're valued, and that we, and that there's going to be opportunities for them.
Right. Makes sense.
And I don't think that there's really a problem with that from a board perspective.
No, probably not, no.
Okay.
If we needed to, we could probably ask for a attorney.
Yep, I will.
Okay.
Anupam, do you have any questions?
No additional questions, but I do like this recommendation, the suggestion between Patrick and Sean. Thanks.
Sean, do you have anything?
No further questions.
Doug?
Yeah, just one more. With regards to hiring people that already work here, do you still go through the same background checks over again?
Yes, we do.
Okay. So it's just, just because they were already found, okay, here, working already, you still do the...
Still have to do it.
Yep.
Okay. So that does slow down the hiring process?
It does.
We've heard that.
Okay.
Lauren, do you have anything?
No more questions.
All right. Patrick, Greg, do you have any more?
Just for the, we talked about this in the FNO meeting, but I think it'd be important for the people that are watching here and at home. Can you talk a little bit about the process that we use in interviewing and selecting the providers? You know, who, what representation did we have for the different stakeholder groups?
Sure. So we had three rounds of interviews. The first round was made up of a high school principal, middle school principal, elementary director. We had members of the PCEA, PCEA Union President was on both first and second round. We had operations team members on both first and second round. Second round, we invited Mrs. Merritt and Mr. Tiskwitz, I believe. And then after that process, we moved it forward. Again, the PCEA Union President was on that round as well. We moved it forward to the core, and the core took it, and met with the core members on it. And I believe you guys had two meetings, maybe three, on it. And then we kind of came together with the consensus of wanting to move forward with our partnership possibility with ABM.
I know that we had the PCEA leadership team. Did we have teachers that were participating? You know, do we, do we have the people that are in those rooms?
So we had one teacher that was, that was part of it as well. She was a part of the PCEA grievance committee? Thank you, sorry. PCEA Grievance Committee member that was on for the back end of one of the interviews of the first round. Also, Ms. Piaz and myself meet every other week with the PCEA Grievance Committee, and they were involved, they've been involved in the whole process along the whole way.
And this particular vendor is the one that was unanimously recommended? Consensus, majority?
Yeah, it's all three rounds.
All three.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you.
All right, that is it. Thank you so very much.
Thank you.
All right, next up is the Consider Resolution for Custodial Services, beginning 7/1/21, first reading.
As we discussed, we met with the FNO committee last Thursday, and went through the hiring process, as we just discussed. The current contract is currently ending for the current vendor on June 30th, 2021. We received bids on March 18th, and had six firms move forward to the second round of interviews for, then move to the third, second round. So six first, then fourth on the second round, and then two candidates were in the last round. So it has been a unanimous decision of all three levels to move forward with ABM Industry Group to be our custodial services firm, beginning July 1st, 2021. It's a three-year contract with two one-year renewals. Sample contract with all the attachments, including the proposals, is attached for your information.
Thank you. Patrick, do you have any questions?
If you're not, we've talked about this extensively at FNO, and we talked about the contracts and the entire process.
Excellent. Anupam?
None for me, thank you.
All right, Sean?
No questions.
Doug?
No questions.
Lauren?
No questions.
No, see, the FNO meeting really cuts down the questions.
It was a four-hour meeting, ma'am.
Cuts down the questions here. You still answered them, but you just didn't have to do it here.
There's a reason you have me in the FNO meeting, and all the other board members there. We ask all of our hard questions there.
I just have one question. So when I was looking at this, and there was the, you put in the, what it would cost if we had our own people, if we did it, moved it in-house, which, thank you so much for running those numbers and getting them. And I, I was wondering why in the Enhanced, it has 96, it's based on 96 people? But most of these other bids were all based on 84 people.
Yes, that was our base bid, was 84, with 20 additional COVID cleaners getting it to 104. ABM Enhanced is a different proposal that we actually liked, that going to 96 FTE. And so we're recommending that 96 ABM Enhanced bid for the bid award in two weeks.
Okay, because here it shows 84, ABM Enhanced, 84.
Yeah, that's 84 without the COVID cleaners.
Okay. All right, thank you. Just trying to see if I could whittle down that cost. All right, so no further questions. Thank you very much. This is the first reading. It will come back to the board next, next board meeting in two weeks. So next up, we have Consider Resolution to Approve 2020 Bond Project Tuck Contract, BPT1 Audiovisual and Other Technology Needs for Elementary Renovations and Additions, first reading.
Mr. Solster is here to discuss the presentation he made to FNO last week for the new buildings under EL1, that's the new classroom spaces, Dotson, Erickson, Field, and Hallsing.
So, thank you. So the resolution tonight is for the recommendation for AV technology to be installed in those four schools in the new learning spaces and office spaces. As was mentioned, we met in FNO. We shared the proposal to actually also have this serve as an opportunity for us to pilot several systems, because we have a future large-scale refresh planned. And then, following that, based on the input from the members, I also confirmed that we would see active use by students and staff in those spaces by January of next year. And I'm open to fielding any questions people might have regarding any aspect of this.
All right, Patrick?
So just to provide some context for the fellow board members in the community, this is for actually four different sets of technology that we're deploying. They'll be mixed amongst those schools, correct?
Yes.
So that we can evaluate these, these new touchscreen displays to, as potential future standards that we do in subsequent elementary school refreshes.
Perfect. Yes, exactly. Thank you.
And so we're, we're going to do those, and in some cases, we may, we talked potentially about having multiple in one school, so AB comparisons might be easier?
Yep.
Is that, is that something that is...
So we're actually, at this point, we're considering what we would do is, we'd like to have the cohort learn one model or one brand, but then we would... like to have the cohort learn one model or one brand, but then we would, at some point in the year, late probably spring, swap the boards out. So we actually want to, but we have a plan now. We actually, based on your input, we, we'd like to see active feedback from the stakeholders.
And we would also put in the height adjustable processes to be able to support the different grade, I'm sorry, different age levels at the element.
Correct. And we're locking, we're going to be getting in unit pricing for board height adjustment, because in some cases, with the, the fully flexible mounts, they're about $800 more. It might actually be more cost-effective for us to only occasionally spend less than that, a fraction, to actually have them remounted. We're looking at different options.
Great.
And we, we got the options in the bid proposals.
Great, that's perfect. Just for context, we're looking to make sure that we get feedback from not only the educators, but also the students participating with these devices as part of the process. So it was a really great discussion that we had at FNO. I have no more questions.
All right, Anupam?
No questions, but I appreciate hearing that we're going to get kids and staff to test this out. Thanks. Sean?
No questions.
Doug?
No.
Okay. Lauren?
No question.
All right. Thank you so much. That is really exciting to have, to get the active feedback and decide what works and what doesn't. And thank you so much. This is a very exciting Bond 2020.
Yep. Thank you.
All right, next up, we have an action item. It is, oh, the first reading. Consider Resolution to Purchase Picnic Tables for Elementary Schools, First Reading.
Yes, this was discussed at the FNO on May 6th, for the purchase of picnic tables for the elementary schools. These are 56 Ultra Play Systems, similar to the thermoplastic-coated picnic tables we have purchased previously for the middle schools. It was under the RMC bid, so it's a state contract. It's Q-70153. It's for the School Specialties is the vendor for 56 tables, just under $50,000. Funded from the, SR2 funds. And so here is, as you see, is the schools and how many picnic tables they have requested. On average, it's about four per elementary school. It was such a hit at the middle school level that now the elementary principals want to participate as well. I have, I believe, Mr. Rosinski is in the house. If you have any additional questions, these are to maintain the physical distancing at lunch, or small group instruction, or outdoor class activities if weather permits.
All right, could we get some clarity around the first set of picnic tables that we approved and have been delivered? We've had quite a few questions from the community about how those are being utilized.
Sure. The original purchase was for 125 picnic tables to be distributed to the five middle schools and the four high schools. So we distributed the middle schools per the middle school request and per Starkweather's request. When it was decided that the high schools wouldn't be having lunch, we dispersed a portion of those tables out to the middle school to try and accommodate their original ask for the number of picnic tables. And that's where we stand right now.
So the ones that were supposed to be at PSAP for lunch have been dispersed to the middle schools in Starkweather, and they're using those on a daily basis to deal with the physical distancing, as also outdoor classrooms and outdoor instructional spaces.
Thank you. That's, that's the clarity that people have been asking for. Patrick, do you have any questions?
Yeah, just to add into that, we discussed at FNO that my understanding is, is these picnic tables have been really well received by the middle school level, that they're using them on a regular basis, and that's part of what drove the decision for the elementary.
Correct. And Starkweather's really used them well also. So it's been a real bright spot. It's really nice to see the kids out enjoying, enjoying themselves. And we got lucky, we got some good weather when we first got them. So it was a very good phase in.
So and towards that same end, given that we've moved the high school tables there, if we look at our situation come the fall, and we might need to still have those for either social distance, or for, for physical distancing, or for whatever reasons, we might purchase additional picnic tables for the high school versus taking the ones away from the middle school? Or what's the thinking?
I think both of those are options, but I think there, there will be an increased need if the social distancing requirements remain.
Okay. Thank you.
Anupam?
No questions for me, thank you.
Sean?
No questions.
Doug?
Yeah, at a previous meeting, we had discussed security of the tables to some type of locking. Could you?
How they're secured?
Yeah, could you show?
Yeah, so we use heavy-duty chain, and we, we chain the tables together a little bit further than six feet slack. We also made them so that we could unlock them and reduce the number of tables on the chains so that the principals could still orient them properly, and it wouldn't be just a long line. So it's worked out well. Tables are all in good shape, and the community's respecting them.
So they, there's no tripping hazard or anything over the chains or?
No, they're, we're, we're doing okay with that. It's, it's, it's a well-known obstacle, but we're doing okay.
Okay, thank you.
Hey, Lauren?
Yeah, I guess, it's not really a question. We talked about this at FNO, and I wanted to bring this forward too. You know, we're, this is a first read, we're, we're getting close to the end of the school year, and you know, it's saying there's about a five-week delivery time for these tables. However, we know the last tables came in a little bit earlier too, so that lead time was kind of cut in half, which was great. But I just want to bring to light our conversation that, you know, we have summer school, so these are going to be utilized in the warmer months, and this is not going to just sit dormant, you know, because the majority of our kids are out on, on summer break. So I just wanted to bring that forward.
Good, good point. Thank you so much. It is nice, if you are doing summer school, to be able to take the children outdoors, just to enjoy the weather. Thank you so much. These are, yes?
One more before you.
Okay. They're very nice picnic tables, too. They'll get a lot of use over the years, I'm pretty sure. Okay, Patrick?
Yeah, I just was looking at the table, and I can't remember, on the middle school and high school ones, were those designed for accessibility? Because I'm not sure that these ones are.
They are not designed for accessibility, but our, our elementary school children are smaller, so we don't need the extended end. It's really an extended end, which we really don't need in this case.
Okay, so we can still, for those students that might be mobility-challenged, we can still accommodate them with these, with these tables?
I believe we can, yes.
Okay, and have you confirmed that with the principals? Because otherwise, I'd rather have us make sure that we get ones that?
I'll double-check with the principals, but there was no ADA tables requested.
Understand. I want us to be proactive and make sure that we're equitable and accommodating for everybody. So I know that they may not have thought about that, so this may be important for us to, to consider to make sure that we have accessible tables.
We will do that.
Okay, thank you, sir.
All right, anybody else? Nope. Thank you so much. All right, our next, our next item is an action item, 210569, Consider Approval of a Resolution for Revised Electrical Easements for Erickson and Field Elementary Schools. This is a first and final reading. I am looking for a motion.
Madam President, I move that we consider approval of a resolution for revised electrical easements for Erickson and Field Elementary School, first and final reading, action item 210569.
I am looking for a second.
Second.
Thank you. It has been moved by Member Kehoe and seconded by Member Brooks, that we consider approval of a resolution for revised electrical easements for Erickson and Field Elementary Schools, first and final, action item 210569. Could we get some information on this?
Sure. So in accordance with EL1, that's our current package, the improvements at Erickson and Field Elementary School require us to move the electrical service to the building in a new location. And as a result of that movement, we have to adopt a revise or a new easement with DTE Energy to reflect that movement. And so what you have before you are the official documents that have to be executed with DTE in order to do that work. So we, we got those today, but we discussed the, what was included in that at FNO last Thursday.
And we brought these forward as first and final because this is work that's necessary, and we don't want to hold up the construction projects that we're doing there.
No, we don't.
This is almost standard business that we've had with the other easements that we've, we've needed to do for, for, for water lines, et cetera.
All right. Does anybody have any questions about this? All right, so I will call for the vote. All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? No? All right. Resolution passed, 6-0. Next up, we have citizens' comments. I have five right now. I'm going to call them in the order I got them up here. So our first, and you can come on down here to the microphone. You have three minutes. Oh, the timer is already up, fantastic. Bonnie Fagerson?
Hello?
You can go ahead whenever you're ready.
Okay, I'm ready now. My moment of silence there was symbolic of how a lot of us, parents of seniors feel this year with communication amongst the district to the parents. And today, Ms. Merritt, I appreciate your quick response to my email in terms of preparation for the prom. But I did feel I still needed to come here tonight to voice how we are feeling as parents. They say that if you don't come up and speak, that you guys don't know how we feel. So here I am. I just wanted to speak in, in regards to the seniors and the senior events this year, and share with you my frustration, as well as the frustration of many other senior parents. Now, in, in terms of communication of these senior events, we recognize that it's been a tough year. It's been a tough year for everyone. We're trying to wrap up this year, and people are trying to make plans. And our kids have nothing but dreams and hopes of wrapping up their senior year with some fun activities. And I would hope you all understand that prom is one of the big excitement stars at the end of the school year. As we sit today, prom, we were promised information, details, details of all of the senior events that were going to be, we were promised those details last Friday. Right now, our prom is a TBD, and our students are sitting there going, are we going to have it or not? To them, this is the, the check is in the mail. We don't know for sure if that prom is coming or not. And again, I got some information today, and I appreciate it. But it still doesn't erase the anxiety that several students are having of, are we going to have it or not? Now, there's, there's division happening within the community because some people are like, I'm not going to wait anymore, we're going to schedule our own prom. And it's creating this, now I don't know what, what prom to go to because I'm, I'm waiting for the school, and I want to buy a ticket to hear. So all I'm saying is, I'm here to speak to you guys, the board. You guys represent the community. The community is looking at this as a deliverable for you guys to deliver for our students. We're asking you, put this on your radar and make sure it happens, because you've got a lot of kids that are being set up for disappointment if it doesn't happen. So I just wanted you to know. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, we have Barb Lehman.
So I'm actually Leah, but we're going to go in order, so.
Okay. Feel free.
Okay. My name is Leah.
If you could give your name before you start, then.
What's that?
If you could, if you could give your name before you start?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Leah Babinski. I'm a school counselor at Salem High School, and I work part-time as a clinical counselor at a local practice. I'm a mom of two awesome boys that will soon be in elementary school in this district. I come to you this evening because we need your help in improving the K-12 comprehensive school counseling curriculum. First, we as a PSAP counseling team are extremely excited that we are moving towards adding an additional counselor next year. This will bring numbers down from an average of 420 to around 360 to 1, and is an amazing step in the direction of the American School Counseling Association's recommendation of 250 to 1. Our counterparts in the middle school still have an average around 412, and only some of our elementary schools have a counselor. Additionally, there is only one Starkweather counselor supporting our students with some of the highest needs in the district. Why is it so important to have school counselors, social workers, and psychologists in each building? According to the CDC, suicide rose to the second-leading cause of death among adolescents in 2016. ASCA and U of M Trails Training Statistics have estimated that one in four children has a diagnosable mental health disorder, 80% of children in need of mental health services will not receive them, and 20% of students experience mental health issues that severely interfere with school performance. 90% of, 90% of people who develop a mental health concern show warning signs during their teen years, and we are also seeing the strain of the pandemic on students. The CDC's Morbidity and Mortality Report in November showed child and adolescent emergency room visits related to mental health began increasing in April 2020 and remained elevated through October 2020 compared with the same period in 2019. A National Institute of Mental Health article in April stated, as is often the case, unfortunately, the most vulnerable among us are also feeling the mental health effects most intensely. Job loss, housing instability, food insecurity, and other risk factors for poor outcomes have disproportionately hit minority communities. And according to the National Alliance on Mental Illness, there is strong evidence that members of the LGBTQ+ community at are higher risk for experiencing mental health conditions, especially depression and anxiety disorders. I'm sometimes overwhelmed by these statistics, and throw pandemic on top of all this, I'm like, what do we do next? We know that teens with mental health concerns who get appropriate treatment have increased test scores and improved academic achievement. School counselors are often the first point of contact for parents and guardians concerned about their students' mental health and looking for outside resources. Teachers, counselors, administrators, and support staff are feeling this impact, which continues to make our jobs more difficult. We are often left to triage and focus our energy on the crises that emerge daily, and we want to be proactive and preventative in nature. We believe a trauma-informed approach with a focus on relationships is essential. This includes training for all staff in the district that interact with students and families. In closing, I encourage and invite all of you to come spend a day in the counseling office, as any of us would welcome the visit and a chance to share more insight into what we do in our offices each day. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, I am Barb Lehman. I'm Barb Lehman, I'm a counselor at Canton High School. School counseling programs ensure all students will have the opportunity to acquire and demonstrate competencies in personal, social development, academic development, and career development. These competencies are necessary for students to achieve personal excellence and to become a productive contributing citizen in a complex global community. In the next few months, the PCP Park Counselors, for the first time in almost 20 years, will be hiring one additional counselor per building. It is the first step in creating a balance that our contract, and you, along with past board members, have encouraged and supported. We just need, we just need to continue moving forward to adequately support our students at all levels. The concern for adequate staffing includes the middle school teams and the elementary schools that have no support. The research says that early intervention is imperative, and the follow-up can make all of the difference. The elementary counselors struggle to have the time to follow up with students, and the middle school, middle school is concerned about the virtual academy for the future and how to maintain, maintain it for all kids. We continue to evaluate our program at the high school to the needs of our students. This year, our counselors created a myriad of social-emotional learning curriculum. Each week, our students have learned about mindfulness, self-care, anxiety, and stress. They have learned quick tips for support, but this is just a beginning. I think we forget that there is information we learn that may not always be applied today, but we have been given the gift for the future in continuing a road to success. This is why early intervention in the elementary school and middle school is critical, and why at the high school, we continue to teach skills, make connections, and provide resources. At all levels, the paperwork is taking over. I envision sitting at my desk and being overrun by papers. Between that and all emails, we lose more and more time with our students. My favorite part of today was when a junior stopped in to talk, in person, plans for the future, finishing his classes, and hoping to pass multicultural literature. And what, and what did I think about going into the medical field? Big decisions, but what my job is supposed to be about. We talked about his senior schedule and plans for the summer. We talked about how he was handling the emotional struggles with online learning to in-person classes. The recommendation by the ASCA is 80% direct indirect services, such as individual counseling, group counseling, and classroom counseling. Lessons to indirect services for kids to establish a strong and supportive counseling program. for kids to establish a strong and supportive counseling program. I hate that timer. We have a list of programs and ideas, but we need support of a manageable caseload at all levels. And we need the district's commitment to allow us to work with students in a counseling capacity. Management of 504 scheduling and pulled-in-to-substitute teach take us away from time with our students. We are thankful for the new hires, but we need to continue to do better. We need to be the standard, a high standard for our students. Thank you.
Thank you. So then you are Kristi Hanny?
Kristi Harry.
Harry, thank you.
Good evening. My name is Kristi Harry and I am a school counselor at Discovery. As my colleagues have shared, we are here to discuss improving upon our delivery of mental health support for students. It is time for some updates to the operation of our counseling department. First, we would like your support in implementing regular meetings as a K-12 counseling department. This time is necessary to consult about student cases, discuss counseling content and its delivery, share resources, and strengthen our department as a whole. K-12 counselor meetings would also be used for counselor-specific professional development in the areas of social-emotional, career, and academic student support. At present, this type of meeting does not exist in our district. And unfortunately, some of us couldn't name, let alone point out, some of our colleagues at other grade levels. We should know and we should be able to lean on one another. Next, not only do we want to build our relationships as colleagues, we would very much like you to consider building a comprehensive K-12 counseling program in our district. The American School Counseling Association tells us that a comprehensive school counseling program that aligns with a multi-tiered system of support is important in removing systemic barriers and providing academic and behavioral interventions and supports for all students. The presence of a comprehensive school counseling program is linked to an array of positive student outcomes ranging from better attendance to a stronger sense of connection to school. It is positive to hear, especially in recent years, the shift in focus on mental health, social-emotional learning, equity, and trauma-informed education. All of this is incredibly important to the health, wellness, and success of our students. The longevity of a K-12 curriculum would not only provide structure to the content we are delivering to students over the course of their time in our district, but it would also mean a cohesive program delivered at every grade level specific to student social-emotional topics, academic growth, and career planning. Such a program would really create proactive, measurable action and positive change in this district for our students. Finally, we are in need of a concrete district crisis plan for our community's darkest days. Our recent student tragedies have once again highlighted this need and we are looking for your support to push for protocols to be implemented and followed. Clear procedures and communication practices among our administrators and mental health staff must be established so adequate support can be deployed where it is needed most by our counselors, social workers, and psychologists. In the past, a district crisis plan has been worked on, but the plan remains unfinished. We need a completed and communicated district plan so that all hands can be on deck when students and staff are in need of support or are grieving. In closing, we have the opportunity right now to really improve our community's counseling program and support kids in a way that we've always wished we could. Let's not miss this mark. Let's get it right. Supported teachers and counselors equal successful students. Thank you.
Uh, thank you. And then I have, uh, Mary Waidell, Widdell?
Hi, I'm Mary Waidell. I'm a Plumb Township resident and I am a parent of two children. One who attends Our Lady of Good Counsel School and the other attends Stepping Stone School for the Gifted at the PARC. Um, we are very blessed that both of our children have been in school in person all year r- r- round and also are both healthy at this time. Um, so why am I here? Um, I've come to this meeting to try and find out when the pause ser- and bus service will, um, be over for the Our Lady of Good Counsel students. Um, usually by the first week of May, we have received a notification of the registration form for the following school year, uh, for registering our kids for bus service. And that has not come out yet. So, um, I've done some, some calling. Um, I've, I've called Durham, I've emailed. Um, I'm not getting answers. They don't know if there is a plan for, or, or what the plan is for returning bus service to Our Lady of Good Counsel. Um, so along with myself, there's a lot of parents that do depend on the bus service. Um, and we will be going back to work in the offices. Um, and so having this bus service is, is really important for being able to get our kids to and from school. Um, so if there is any information on when this, this form will be coming out, um, how the planning is going for returning the bus service, um, that would be greatly appreciated. I, I just don't know who to talk to. Um, if, if, maybe after the meeting, um, that would be great. Uh, I really appreciate it and so do a lot of other parents. Thank you.
Okay, thank you so much. Um, so that was all the, uh, cards I had. Did anybody else want to make a comment at this point? Okay, we will move on. Uh, the next one is future agenda topics. Um, as a reminder, um, the list comes in the board notes every week. Um, did anybody have anything they wanted added to that list? Nope? All right. And then the next up is, um, we had discussed the MASV Board Governance Standards and attached to the, this week's agenda is a resolution, um, to adopt the MASV Board Governance Standards. And if that is acceptable, we will, um, take action on that next week and then we can, um, next board meeting and, um, sign it and adopt them. Um, the MASV hopefully had a template on their website for us to use to adopt them. So did anybody have any questions about those?
No.
No? All right. So we will adopt those at the next meeting. Um, they are attached to, um, the agenda. All right, and the last, uh, we are at G, which is follow-up board questions.
Madam President?
Yes?
Before we move into that, can I bring up another discussion topic?
Yes.
Which is not on the agenda, but-
Yes, feel free.
I think a little timely. Uh, in the past, we've had some discussions around legislative advocacy and how we can advocate for policies and laws that are, uh, supportive of students and student success. Last week, I received a memo from the Michigan Department of Education about Michigan's Read by Third Grade Law moving forward this year. We all know, we've talked about it in board meetings, that this law states third-grade students that receive a score of 1252 or below on their ELA part of the M-Step are eligible for retention, meaning they can be held back based on one test score in third grade. Last year, the retention piece of the law was waived. I was hoping that it would be waived for this year as well, but that's not the case. We're, they're moving forward with that retention piece. I believe that the punitive measures, um, part of the law do not need to be in the Read by Third Grade Law, especially during a pandemic year, which has resulted in so many challenges and stress for our students. This one test alone does not give us a complete picture of a student. So local school district leaders who agree that this retention piece is poor public policy are encouraged to contact their local officials, legislators, to let them know how you feel about this retention piece, not just during a pandemic year, but moving forward. So I just wanted to share that memo and encourage people to contact their legislators.
Um, so I can email out everybody, our representative and senators', um, information, their contact information, um, because it's often, um, very helpful if they get, um, the more, the more communication they get on it, the more important it seems. Um, yes?
Ms. Rale, do you know how many students would be affected by this? I know we've had a number of conversations about this in the past and we've seen that those students that were potentially affected by it in past years actually, um, made significant progress going forward without retention. And I'm, I'm curious as to, um, if you know the numbers that might be affected this, this year.
I don't yet, but I do know, I can share historically, because even before the law came into effect, what we did here was proactively looked at the students who would likely be affected by the law had it been in effect at that time. Uh, across the state, the, what the, the projection is, is that we would see about 5% of students that would be affected. Um, for us, the years, the year that we ran the data, because last year we didn't have the, um, we didn't have the assessments, we didn't have the data, we had nine students that would have been affected by the law. There's something called a, a good clause, good cause exemption, which there are several criteria, um, including, does a student have an IEP? Has the student received, um, intervention services for two of the past years? Um, and a number of other factors. And so when we looked at extrapolating those students who had a good cause exemption, it was really, it was, I believe it was two or three students that would have been impacted. We work very diligently with the family, very proactively. Um, we, we have something called an IREP, which is an Individualized Reading Improvement Plan for any of our students who are struggling at the elementary level to unlock content around reading. Um, I will say we are, we feel very strongly that all students can and will learn to read. It isn't necessarily in, uh, in a, you know, in a, in the time that sometimes a legislative body might say, this is a cut point for when the students learn to read. Um, every student with the right supports will unlock the ability to read and read well. Um, so with that being said, generally speaking, it's a very small number, but, um, it does cause some concern and some trepidation and some, some discomfort for families when they get a, a, something in June from, from the state of Michigan saying, here's, your sub, your, your student is subject to this. We reach out immediately and, um, be very proactive as soon as we have all that data. And then there is a letter that we provide a template for families that they can, um, utilize as well and then we, we connect with them. So, you know, we'll, we'll know that as things move forward, as we get more information, but it's really based on their, um, assessment scores, so.
Thank you Patty for sharing the, uh, our legislators.
So, oh yeah.
And thank you for, Newcom, for bringing the subject up.
Yes. Um, all right, Senator Paul Hankey has spoken multiple times in the Senate Chamber about removing that punitive measure. Um, so thank you. Um, did anybody else have any questions about this? All right. Um, so then we are on to follow-up board questions. Uh, so the board would like to see a comparison of last year's spring attendance rates compared to this year's, as discussed in the two-way interaction rate review. Added to the request, please include numbers, percentages, and absent codes and provide clarification regarding two-way interaction rates and attendance for quarantined students.
I believe Mr. Tisquith is still working on that. We should have that in this week's board notes.
Correct. Uh, well, we're working with our technology department and our people accounting coordinator to try and extrapolate that data from my start. It's been a challenge, let me just say that.
All right. Uh, the next one is, the board would like to receive information in board notes reflecting the total number of students, uh, that participate in the Cooperative Education Programs with Livonia Public Schools and Wayne Wesleyan Community Schools. That was in, uh, the recent board notes. Um, and then the board would like a slide added to the Ecall presentation so parents are aware the district is gathering survey data that I'm assuming will be included next time we do-
Make 25.
The Ecall. And then lastly, the board would like to receive a copy of the letter sent by PSEP principals to their staff regarding mask requirements. That was also included in the board notes or did we get that separately?
I think it's separate from this.
Okay. We did get that.
Yes.
So those were the, um, follow-up questions from the last meeting. And did we have outstanding items for tonight that we need?
I believe we had one item from, uh, from our bidder for the custodial to get more information about how they survey and measure success.
Yes.
And so that we can understand how those metrics would be presented back to us and we can see how they're achieving the, the definition of clean.
Okay. And were you wanting that before we vote or?
Yes, yes.
Okay.
I think it's important that we get this, um, before we vote.
Okay. All right, anything else? All right, so we have come to the end of our agenda. So we will be, um, adjourning the meeting. It is 9:30. Um, have a great evening.